I think that there's creepy.
Yeah, all of us.
Did you hear that?
What? Okay. Takes me a while to pack up.
That does it, right? Good afternoon. It is one o'clock, time for our regularly scheduled commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
Today it is, oh, it's locked in here. It is Commissioner Anru's turn to do the pledge and the prayer.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads? Father, we come to this day, we are so grateful for the opportunity we have to do the city's business. And Father, we thank you for each and every resident of this city, and we just ask your blessing upon them. Now, we lift up our first responders, knowing that, Father, they work all times and all hours and whenever needed. And, Father, we especially work up the utility, uh, we lift up the utility crews. Father, we know that during this time of the year, they can be called at a moment's notice. So, we just ask for your divine protection. Thank you for our families, and help us to remember what's important this time of the year. We are so grateful for all you do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next up is approval of the minutes. Did anybody see any changes or corrections that needed to be made? Okay, they stand approved as presented. Up next is public comment. This is a time for anybody to come on up and speak about anything that is not on the agenda. And if you do come up, please state your name for the record.
Trying to get some.
Yeah.
We're flexible. This is very supportive, yes. So, hi, I'm Jeanette Turpin. I'm the executive director of Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network, and also the honorary director of the Garden Academy Early Learning Center Board. And I just wanted to tell you guys that we're open.
Yay!
And we're officially licensed, like our permanent full-time license.
Yay.
We got our license on November 30th, and we've had kids with our temporary license since November 6th. So, tomorrow's actually our one-month anniversary of having kids, which has went by so fast. And I walked in yesterday, we, we were still, we started slow on purpose. We've been getting teachers. We have 10 staff hired so far, not counting myself, six of which are full-time and four part-time. And we've just, because of the grant that we got through the Childcare Accelerator Grant, we've been able to just ramp up very slowly and intentionally. And like Esther Pena, our director, has been in the classroom with multiple teachers talking about why we're doing what we're doing. And like, I got to go sit down and explain family-style dining with them, you know. But we're just, we're, that was our slow part, and now we're going just down the waitlist that we have, and calling everybody, and I think we might have our little infants today.
Yes.
Our little infants, but we still have space for everybody else. And yeah, Esther had two today and has two tomorrow, and so it's just going like it should. And yesterday, I walked into the center in the morning, came in a little later than I have them, like 8:30, and it just sounded like a child care center, water running everywhere because we wash our hands all the time, toys clanking, and kids laughing, and, you know, teachers, you know, talking kids through things and stuff. It was just perfect. Like, I wasn't seeing anything, it just sounded exactly right. So, very excited. Dream come true for me, for real. But I wanted to make sure that you guys know that that's not the end. Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network is actually a separate entity from Garden Academy. So, though I will work with both, which makes it hard to differentiate them, Finney County Childcare is still looking at childcare in general. We plan, Garden Academy plans to do more childcare as needed in the community and as we're able to. But Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network is focusing on systems. We're gonna do some training within the community, some collaboration with other organizations, and just kind of make the whole early childhood community cohesive. That's kind of my goal. So, just one, any questions?
Yeah, congratulations, that's a big feat.
You said you have children. How many, how many do you have currently?
Seven. And then we have two more that are, that, right now, the tours is like they've already seen it, basically, and they're just coming in and basically saying for sure that they want it and getting their normal packet. So, we have two more. And it's just, yeah, we kept four for a couple weeks, just to make sure that we were good. And then now, just a couple every day.
And how many can you support in this?
Our, our original plan was to get licensed for 60, so that we could standard for one director, but there's actually an exception in place right now. And so, our licensing person recommended that we just get fully licensed, because we didn't have to have a full-time director at the moment. So, we're licensed for 91. That doesn't mean that we'll fill up to 91. We still want to keep like the neighborhood model if we can. We don't want to have one gigantic childcare center, and everybody has to come from everywhere to that one. We want to have them spread out like elementary schools, you know? And so, we encourage you guys to keep talking with like development when it comes through for housing and stuff like that, to ask them to have space for childcare, or to possibly build a building that they'll let somebody come into. Garden Academy doesn't have to be that person, anybody. We want diversity of care, because everybody should have the kind of care that fits their family. So, just, yeah, we can be thinking of stuff like that. Call me if you guys have any questions, or want to bounce any ideas off me.
Staffing? Are you fully staffed, or?
Yeah, we are, we are as staffed as we need to be right now. And for expanding into, like technically, we could have about all three of our, or three or four classrooms open right now if we wanted to, just based on how many full-time people we have.
Great.
We're gonna go above that. And we also want to make a subpool for childcare in the community that anybody can use, but so we want to start just training people and getting them their 18 hours, getting them their CPR, doing basic training and stuff like that, and then just having them on a list, and doing the background check for them under Garden Academy's name. And then they'll be able to easily go to other centers to, or home takeers to do substituting and stuff like that. So, we're gonna keep, keep getting people, keep growing the workforce.
Great, great.
And four of those people that work for me are students that went through the high school early childhood pathway.
Very nice.
That's awesome.
Just also dream come true, like phenomenal, like so happy to have them.
So, contact information, how to get ahold of the center?
Mm-hmm.
I know there's people watching, so.
Oh, absolutely. So, okay.
Is there a website?
Yes, super easy right now. So, gardenacademyearlylearningcenter, G-A-E-L-C dot org. It's our website right now, just direct to our Facebook. And then the waitlist is on there. If you want to be considered, even if you just have questions, you can put your name on the waitlist, and we'll call you and talk to you about stuff. And then message on Facebook, or there's a phone number on the Facebook page, and then also on these brochures that we're passing out. And then we're gonna send that brochure to all of the organizations around town, just to let them know that they can, let their people know that there's childcare spots.
Great, great. Anything else? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
And yeah, thanks for your ongoing support.
Any other public comment?
This time, Mayor, item 6A, this is the recognition of folks that have received, or have achieved milestone years of service this year, and we'd like to recognize them. So, if you would mind joining me down here, we'll run through this list and recognize these folks. As in years past, when we, if we call your name and you're here, I'd love to have you join Mayor and I up at the front of the room. And we'll start with Water Resource Manager Fred Jones. Fred's celebrating 10 years of service with the City of Garden City. Congratulations, Fred. Congratulations. Next, we'll recognize Cody Wilson, Police Officer with the Garden City Police Department, also celebrating 10 years of service. Thank you, Cody. Jared Coleman, Finance Director for the City of Garden City, celebrating 10 years of service. Thank you, Jared. Congratulations. Manuel Armanderas with the Water Department. Celebrating. Manuel's celebrating 10 years of service. Next, Ryan Booley with the Electric Department, celebrating 10 years of service. Congratulations, Ryan. Congratulations. Celebrating 10 years of service Curtis Cathcart, also with the Garden City Electric Department. Curtis, congratulations. Congratulations. Jose Champeraz, also with Garden City Electric Department, celebrating 10 years of service. Jose, congratulations. Congratulations. Not here today, but celebrating 10 years of service with Garden City Fire Department is Pete Luna Hernandez. We can go ahead and give Pete a round of applause. Next, celebrating 10 years of service, Marsha Baird, the Parks Department. Marsha, congratulations. Congratulations, thank you very much. Not here today, but celebrating 10 years of service is Dan McPhee with Lee Richardson Zoo. So, we'll give Dan a round of applause as well. Next, next up, celebrating 20 years of service, E.J. Oaks, Captain with the Garden City Police Department. Congratulations. Congratulations, E.J. Celebrating 20 years of service with Garden City Police Department, Robert Ojeda. Celebrating 20 years of service with Garden City Fire Department, Andy Crittenden. Andy, congratulations. Celebrating 20 years of service, Garden City Fire Department, James Southern. Thanks, congratulations. Celebrating 30 years of service, Rose Christ. And that concludes the years of service ceremony. I know several of you came for that, thank you. You are welcome to stay and watch the rest of this exciting meeting. But we'll also take a couple minutes if you want to make, make your way out as well. Thank you to all those receiving milestones. Yemi, do you want them across the hall, taking any kind of a group picture before they disappear?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Item 7A, Finney County Commissioner Lon Pishney submitted Finney County Tourism's Community and Facilities Needs Assessment, completed by Hun-Dun Strategic Partners. You can consider yourselves in receipt of that study. Just a reminder, the commission did contribute $5,000 towards the cost of that study, most of which took place early, earlier than, earlier this year, I believe. So, if you have any questions or any comments, ask them or submit them here. Otherwise, we would use the, use the agenda and use the agenda packet as kind of official receipt and recording of the study.
I will note that the, some of the stuff that we brought up in the initial meeting wasn't really changed, our trade area still improperly calculated and stuff like that, so.
Any other comments? Okay, move on to 12B. Water Resource Manager Jones will provide the governing body an update on the status of extraneous flow basin design for the wastewater treatment plant.
He's in a photo shoot right now.
He is. While we're waiting on him, I'll just make note that items C, D, and E are updates. Two of them are monthly, or, one of them's a monthly report, and the other one is the state of the city resident feedback, or participant feedback, that we got from the Chamber Breakfast. So, we populated that, just thought you'd like to have a copy, and that we could present one back out to the public and Chamber of Commerce as well. And then the update on where we're at with the organizational study. So, do you have any questions over any of those, or any comments regarding those reports? Okay. Still taking a picture over there. I'll call your attention to the meetings of note, item 8. Little bit different date, well pushed a little bit out from when we normally do Southwest Kansas Chambers Night Out in Topeka. But any RSVPs for any of these events, please do those through City Clerk, either City Clerk's office, either C-Lin or Corey. Appropriation ordinance, item 9A. If you don't have any questions on that, the appropriate motion would be to approve ordinance number 2592-2023A.
I move to approve ordinance number 2592-2023A.
Case been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, we'll jump up to item 7B. Water Resource Manager Jones will provide the governing body an update on the status of the extraneous flow basin design for the wastewater treatment plant. Fred?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Apologize for my absence. The purpose of this memo is to give you an update on the design process for the extraneous flow basin for the wastewater treatment plant. As you know, since 2013, there have been three significant backup events. In the Amy Street Townhome, Wilson Edition, and Campus Gardens South subdivisions, 45 homes have been impacted in at least one of these events, based on insurance claims submitted to the city in the past. The most recent event occurred on the evening of July 20th and 21st, early morning this year, due to a large rain event in Garden City. On October 3rd, staff presented an update at the governing body pre-meeting regarding actions proposed by staff to address storm-related issues affecting the sanitary sewer system in addition to the development of the backup prevention program, which the governing body approved at the last meeting. The governing body also directed staff to pursue the design of an extraneous flow basin to capture excess sewage flow that may occur during a storm event to be stored for treatment when the storm, storm event subsides. We've been working with professional engineering consultants, and attached to this memo is their latest update regarding the data gathering that they're doing on the basin. Right now, the, their question they're trying to answer is to determine a final sizing recommendation for the plant. As a result, we're going to be doing some, some pump testing this week, under a couple different scenarios, to try and get them the, the range of information that they need. And then, once that is completed, we should have a more formalized design ready for governing body approval at the next meeting, the second meeting in December. And so, that memo's attached for your information. If you have any questions, available. I also wanted to add that in addition to this work on the extraneous flow basin, we've also been working on this monitoring program using these smart meter lids. PEC is in Garden City at the end of this week to start doing some observations, and then we'll be doing a survey the following week to get elevations of the proposed locations for these smart manhole covers. And so, we also think that we may have an agenda item at that second December meeting as well for that, that project. And so, that will actually give us the ability to monitor flows in the system all the time, and then we can determine what things seem out of sorts during storm events that don't have to be gigantic storm events. So, hopefully, we can, we can find some additional information just during our normal operation. Happy to answer any questions, if you have anything.
No, I know that, I know that several residents here said that, that the bump is really important to the backup prevention, but also that continuing this also, so I really appreciate your work.
Yeah, thank you for your diligence in, in doing this, so I appreciate it, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is item 10A. The governing body's asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from CO Office and Service Business District to R2 Single Family Residential District for the property generally located at 604 North 7th Street. If approved, this would be ordinance number 2971. John?
Good afternoon. Bob Moore is requesting to reason the property generally located at 604 North 7th Street from CO Office and Service Business District to R2 Single Family Residential District. The property is currently vacant, and the owner would like to build a new single-family home on the property and use it as residential. The proposed land use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The current comprehensive plan and future land use map has this property categorized as residential potential. Rezoning the property will not affect any of the surrounding properties. R2's single-family residential would be the most appropriate zoning district. This zoning district takes into account areas which were planted into smaller lots during the early years of the city growth. The governing body may approve the request according to the criteria down below. There are, the planning commission did recommend approval at the November 16th Planning Commission meeting. There are three alternatives. One, the governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Two, the governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-third majority vote. And three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure, failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends alternative one, approving the proposed ordinance.
Any questions?
I make the motion to approve ordinance 2971-2023.
I'll second.
Case been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, John. Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve, hold on just a second, I'm gonna bring on, oops. All right. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from Agricultural District to C2 General Commercial District for the property generally located at the northeast corner of Mary Street and Buffalo Way Boulevard. If approved, this would be order, ordinance number 2972-2023. And I do believe we had a proposed developer of the property on Zoom to provide comment, but we'll go ahead and go through the staff report and see if we can bring that person back.
Matt Ryder, on behalf of Maverick Inc., is requesting to reason the property generally located at the, at the northeast corner of Mary Street and Buffalo Way Boulevard, from A Agricultural District to C2 General Commercial District. The lot is currently vacant, and the applicant intends to build a convenience store and a gas station on a portion of this property. This project is currently going through the site plan review process. The proposed land use is not consistent with comprehensive plan. The current comprehensive plan and future land use map has this property categorized as residential potential. C2 General Commercial District will be the most appropriate zoning district for this use, as a convenience stores and service stations are permitted to use within. Rezoning this property will not affect any of the surrounding properties. The governing body may approve the request according to the criteria down in section The planning commission did recommend approval of the rezoning request at the November 16th meeting. There are three alternatives before you today. The governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Two, the governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-third majority vote. And three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's fail, failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends alternative one, approving the proposed ordinance.
So, I did have a question. So, I know this property's gonna require a turnoff from Mary Street. So, will, will it be one, or how will you, how will you govern how many turnoffs? Because I know that's, it's already a pretty congested street, and the traffic moves pretty fast there.
So, they, they do have one off of Mary, and our engineers will determine that.
Okay.
Yeah, I move that I approve, approve ordinance number 2972-2023.
I'll second.
Case been moved and seconded, any other discussion?
I just have one quick question. You said it's a convenience store, so it's close to the high school facility. I know there were issues raised with another store close to the high school facility. Are they going to be, most convenience stores will sell alcohol or tobacco products. Is that going to be an issue for us, being located at, next to the high school? As far as the distance?
Yeah, as long as they meet the distance requirements. I believe it's 200 feet from the exterior of the building to the nearest property line.
So, this is an adjacent property, and we do have, or did have, they just bounced off again, a developer preliminary kind of site plan working stuff would not consume this entire parcel. And so, the, but, as inherent in your question, and also in John's answer, is all the applicable state laws would still apply, the, the building would have to be set back at least 200 feet from the property line of Garden City High School.
That was my only concern. I know it was brought up with another business that was located close to this high school facility, so just, just asking. Thank you. That was my only.
Okay. Any other? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Next, item C is the first of a few environmental nuisances or nuisance abatements done by resolution. As with prior meetings, we will read the entire background that goes through the notice procedure for the first one. Following that, we'll go through, provided anybody isn't here, and you might look to identify if anybody has an interest in one of these items. We can talk about those separately. Otherwise, we'll move through the other ones, giving you the address and the nature of the violation.
Actually, we have a public hearing at 1:30.
Ah, sounds good. That's less than 60 seconds away, so we should probably do that.
Thank you, C-Lin. Thank you, C-Lin.
We'll now jump forward to item 12A. It's a 1:30 public hearing on the matter of the governing body hearing questions, concerns, and comments from the public concerning the 2023 budget amendments that are necessary to reflect actual 2023 expenditures. Following the hearing, the governing body is asked to approve the certificate of amendment for the 2023 budget. Jared?
Sorry to steal Trent's thunder there. Before you, in the background, it lists out the different funds that are being revised or proposed to be revised. This one before you for publication, that was published in the Telegram and informed with everything that was required. So the alternatives for you today, following the public hearing, are to either approve the, amending the budgets as shown on the 2023 amended budget certificate, or to not approve the budgets as shown, but that would end up causing us an issue and be a budget violation. So take that into consideration.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing. There's anybody here to speak about this issue? Okay, public hearing is closed. Any questions?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the amending the budgets as shown on the 23, 2023 amended budget certificate.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
As a reminder, we'll need each of you to sign that.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
We'll move back up to 10C.
He was so close to last time.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. And if approved, it would be resolution number 3083-2023, and the debate issues at 306 Evan Street. Trent?
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, commissioners. We just wanted you to baronate on that a little bit. Appreciate Jared's taking that spot. So 306 Evan Street, it's just branches scattered throughout the property. We have sent two notices out, the first one on October 17th, 2023, and the second one on November 7th, 2023. We did not receive any response. We have no communication with the property owners. The alternatives for this property would be, number one, the governing body may approve the tax resolution. Number two, the governing body may not approve the tax resolution. Staff's recommendation is approval of the tax resolution and any costs associated will be assessed as property.
I make a motion to approve resolution 3083-2023.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Onto item 10D. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. And if approved, it would be resolution number 3084-2023, and the debate issues at 803 Summit Street.
Make a motion to approve resolution 3084-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. And if approved, it would be resolution number 3085-2023, and debate issues at 812 Bancroft Street.
I move the approved resolution number 3085-2023.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 12B. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the 2024 property and liability insurance renewal for the city of Garden City, Kansas. C-Lin?
Hey, Mayor, Commissioner. I am trying to get our other person that was on Zoom as well. Yes. Okay, hold on just a second. Okay, sorry about that. So, yes, James Charlesworth. So governing body has asked to consider, as Assistant City Manager said, the 2024 property and liability insurance renewal for the city. We went out for, we did request for proposals and we worked with Charlesworth Associates. And I have James Charlesworth on our Zoom meeting. You guys have met him before and he is here to discuss our proposals received. James?
Thank you, C-Lin. For the record, James Charlesworth, couple consulting, 1821 Street, Kansas City, Missouri. As we noted, we did draw a whole market, all brokers. We put together specification, lot listing, et cetera. We have five hundred people who work for the market, remain very difficult to work in Kansas. They're able to look out on one, renewal options, recoverables. This was a considerable increase in premium, 36%. Local changes for property value were pushed up over 23% due to inflation. Construction costs were worth about $32 million in values. And the wind tail deduct will increase from $50,000 per occurrence to $100,000 per occurrence. There were some improvements to the cycle policies other than that, it may be a straight renewal. We marketed multiple accounts throughout the middle part of the country in Kansas and the results are not surprising. It's just difficult to find markets for the city your size and composition. We even approached and associated, an association or trust pool and they declined as well. So unfortunately, we don't have any other options that they're packing.
I did have a question. So here it says that, you know, before we add on the background certain drains and noting that we just have that, so here it's a 50,000, is that per occurrence limit or is it $50,000 total limit? And then we'd have to pick up the rest of that.
James, did you hear that question?
Yes, sir. That's a question on property coverage.
Right.
Yes, yeah, our limit would be 50,000, and to power property, city property. We have full limits for liability coverage, for third-party liability.
Right. As far as for us, we only have, so the policy limit seemed like it was a lot larger last time, and now it's limited to 50,000. Is that due to losses or is it due to just what they're offering this time?
I think it's just the current policy form. I think that across the country, travel is taking into its losses, how to back up planes, so they are pushing out some limit at all their plans.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the 2024 property and liability insurance renewal as proposed by Travelers Insurance for a total of $1,021,524.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Go back to, let's see here, 10C? All right. So the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, this resolution would be number 3zzzz.
No, 12C.
Oh, we've ran through the nuisance resolutions. Look at y'all.
Don't know our Roman numerals.
Yeah, sorry.
You go a lot faster when I'm not here. Think I've heard that before. Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve year-end transfers from the general fund, Fund 100 now in our new accounting system, to the capital improvement reserve, now Fund 302, for selected 2023 programs, capital projects, and equipment purchases not completed by year's end. Jared?
It's time Trent were gonna steal mine. City departments operate on an annual budget that is approved in September for the upcoming year. These budgets include projects, equipment, program expenses, which relate to those departments. If these expenditures are not completed in the current budget year, the funds set aside will become unanticipated cash carryover heading into the next year. Due to unforeseen circumstances, there are times where departments are unable to complete what has been set out for them nearly 18 months earlier. It is recognized that these projects, programs, and capital are an important part of the department's budget, so instead of waiting for another budget cycle, the commission has the opportunity each year to consider a transfer of the money into the capital improvement reserve funds. From here, it could be spent for its intended purpose in a subsequent year. We've done this year over year. This year, kind of on trend with normal. The list is attached to the item. The advisory board for the human resources, this is the amount that's held over outside of what they typically spend and then used for scholarships and different programs, things they can do to help that diversity. Communications has some equipment for the website redesign. They planned on doing that this year, but with staff turnover and some other things that came up, that wasn't accomplished, and so that's going to be held over. The police department has a few different pieces for their LEC remodel project, which has kind of been in the works for a while. So we're going to hold over what we anticipated to spend this year in anticipation of that project coming to fruition, as well as some dollars for bulletproof vests and some SWAT headsets, some search and training, and then some future repairs for the animal shelter that we anticipate will come. So it's kind of the same concept of we hold whatever's not spent each year so that we can build that kind of fund up. Fire has some supplies for TRT, as well as an extractor and a skid unit. The cemetery is a skid steering attachment that they weren't able to order yet this year, but they budgeted in 2023. The zoo has been working on their generator for the south end operations for a couple of years in kind of anticipation, and so we're holding those dollars over. And then the aquatic facility, any of the dollars not spent in the budget throughout the year for the aquatic facility line are held as well in anticipation of replacing slides or big capital type costs on the road. And then future funds for some of our development incentives, as well as the remodeling potential here in this building for any funds not used out of our repair line throughout the year. So if you have questions on any of those, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, the alternatives for the governing body today are to approve the transferring of the funds from the current year to the capital improvement reserve as presented, to approve them with any sort of modifications, or to not approve the transfer. And staff recommends that the governing body approve the transfer from the current year to the capital improvement reserve as presented.
And just for note, too, the codes have changed and updated, too, right?
Correct, yeah.
So the capital improvement reserve is now 302.
Correct, yeah. So the numbers are different. We actually, in the past, have categorized the expenses in the actual budget line that it would have come out of. And we're shifting that to where we're going to use this transfer account code. It's going to help with the audit to see what was transferred, and it doesn't show that it was actually capital expenditure in the year, to help the auditors kind of distinguish between the two. So that's a new transaction we're doing, but it's going to come out of the same budget so that that total cost bottom line at the end of the day will still show what they spent out of this year.
Yeah, clean, cut, and simple. I move that we approve the transfers as presented.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks.
Thanks, Jared. Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an update to the downtown development fund program. Okay.
All righty. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. The downtown development fund was used between 2015 and 2019 as a project cost reimbursement program for businesses within the program designated in downtown country. The previous downtown development fund rounds would reimburse a portion of project costs based on project scope, costs, and location. All applications attached with the scoring matrix, building permit materials, a staff memo, and other necessary information was presented to the governing body to determine eligibility and project reimbursement amounts as they are received. The applicant will receive the reimbursement once they have passed the final inspection according to the building permit and provide to staff with the receipt of the project costs. Over the last several weeks, staff has begun updating the downtown development fund to align with the 2023 comprehensive and downtown plans and city commission goals. The proposed updates to this program include reconfiguration and changes to the metric scoring system, including historic preservation and restoration as an additional eligible project cost, boundary map changes, and lowering the application deadline following an approved building permit to match other programs like the neighborhood revitalization program updates. The scoring matrix used within this program awards points based on the project scope and its relation to a goal or action of the 2023 comprehensive and downtown plans. The scoring matrix sheet will be completed by staff after they have notified the applicant and evaluated the matrix, evaluated the improvements associated with the product. Staff will then total the points earned by the governing body and the matrix to calculate the potential reimbursement recommended to the governing body. The significant proposed updates to the scoring matrix include reconfiguring the points weights and scale, two, removing questions that were duplicants or didn't have a strong connection to the comprehensive and downtown plans or city commission goals, incrementally scale based on project cost percentages for questions about remodels, facade improvements, and addressing fire, safety, or access violations. All the previous eligible projects in the previous rounds of the downtown development fund are still listed as eligible projects. Each individual project connects to at least one goal or action of the comprehensive or downtown plans. Staff has proposed adding historic preservation and restoration to a designated historic building and landmarks as an eligible project for reimbursement. Including historic preservation and restoration will achieve at least one goal and action found in the comprehensive plan while helping lower applicants' costs to complete such a project. The proposed program updates also include changing the boundaries for eligible projects, eligible properties. The proposed boundary is based on the downtown boundary map defined in the 2023 Garden City Downtown Plan. The proposed boundary extends further south of West Santa Fe Street to Isabel Ave and east between Spruce and Fulton Street. The proposed boundary will also reduce the boundary between St. John Street and West Fulton Street, which contains the city, excuse me, the county administrative building and residential properties. There are three alternatives in front of you. First, the governing body may approve the downtown development fund programs, updates as presented. Two, the governing body may approve the downtown development fund changes. And three, the governing body may not approve the downtown development fund programs. And staff recommends the governing body approve the proposed downtown development fund program updates as presented.
Any questions?
So as far as the downtown vision, are they the ones, are they helping as far as promote these opportunities also in the downtown, or is it mainly just the city doing the promotion? Or how's that work?
We haven't discussed or talked about ways to promote this program just yet. I can imagine that going through them would be a very helpful tool.
Yeah, I mean, the map, I appreciate that you're following the boundaries. That was really well answered.
I kind of just, I would like this probably see on the documents required, because professionally, you're not going to be able to get a bid from a contractor who doesn't have the plans for that remodel or renovation project. So they're going to have to acquire that service upfront before they get bid on a project. I guess I don't really, it doesn't have to be required, but that might be something you would let the applicant know of that cost upfront before they get the bid. That's just probably a general kind of indication.
Any other questions?
Well, I appreciate all the hard work that's went into this. I know it's very time consuming and somewhat tedious, but it looks like you've done a really great job. I move that we approve the downtown development fund program updates as presented.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a first amendment to the development agreement for Chapel Heights Fifth Edition.
Okay, Mayor, Commissioners, before you today for consideration is this amendment bear development agreement for Chapel Heights, Phase 5. This is the first amendment to the development agreement. The developer, Chapel Heights LLC, has requested to amend the approved eligible cost list and the expected expenditures and revision to the schedule for payment fees. Through the RHIG program, Chapel Heights LLC is eligible to be reimbursed for the cost listed. The existing total eligible cost was $3,202,192.2. Chapel Heights LLC is requesting to raise the total eligible cost to $3,223,592.2. This is an increase of $21,400 to include the administration fee and the cash engine of land. The increase gives the developer the ability to be reimbursed for his additional incurred costs. However, reimbursement is not guaranteed as it is dependent upon property tax revenues generated per the district. Additionally, Chapel Heights LLC is requesting to revise the schedule for payment for the following fees, administrative, electrical distribution system, expansion cost, street light installation fee, traffic control, and street name sign fee, and cash engine of land payment. The fee schedule will be as follows. Payment one, $20,000 to be paid on the date that the city executes amendment number one to the development agreement. Payment number two, $100,000 to be paid on the date that the board is convinced with installation of electrical infrastructure. Payment number three, $335,662.2 to be paid on the date that installation of the transformers commenced by the Public Utilities Department, Electric Division of the city. Alternatives before you. Number one, the governing body may approve the first amendment to the development agreement as proposed. Number two, the governing body may approve the first amendment to the development agreement changes. Number three, the governing body may not approve the first amendment to the development agreement. Staff's recommendations, the governing body approve the first amendment to the development agreement as proposed. Any questions?
Turned out a question. Some of the residents in that area have kind of just asked who, by who sets the speed limit in that area, or have they, because I know it talks about, you know, traffic control. Are they planning to put up speed limit signs, or is that something that, you know, the community can request? They do that, or?
Within the subdivision, they're typically not placed. I'm not sure the formal route to get any signs in this type of subdivision. Usually your traffic is what triggers different types of streets, collectors or arterial, but I'm not sure process to put something, but it's not being planned for them.
Okay. They just, yeah, I just heard a couple of, you know, residents in that, that live in that area were saying that there's cars that speed down that road, they're in the entrance way, and then, you know, they'll do donuts on that little intersection. So I don't know if, you know, they can request an officer go kind of stand by there for a few days, maybe, you know, police that a little bit, but, yeah, they're asking about traffic signs and whatnot, but I told them I'd ask.
I will look into the process and what can do help. I'm going to get that.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve the first amendment to the development agreement as proposed.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please note that Commissioner Ortiz has stepped down for the next three items.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the guaranteed maximum price of $13,79460 for the Garden City Fire Station Number Three EMS Facility and authorize the project to move to the construction phase.
Chief? In 2022, the Garden City Fire Department of the city county EMS went out to bid for Fire Station Number Three EMS Facility and received no bids. City and county staff met to determine next steps. Based on the feedback received, city and county staff decided to change the construction process from design and build to construction mender at risk in December of 2022. In March of 2023, the governing body approved entering into preconstruction contract with Crossland construction. In the following months, city and county staff worked through an evaluation of the project and decided that it needed to be value engineered. Cross construction along with city and county staff identified approximately 38 items to be value engineered, simplifying the construction, lowering the project budget by approximately 2.4 million dollars. In May of 2022, 2023, the preliminary budget, 13.2, was presented to and approved by the governing body and the Board of County Commissioners. City and county staff met with the design professionals to start redesign process, the redesign process of the project. Over the next six months, city and county staff met biweekly to discuss progress and design checks, design and budget checks. Of the 38 items identified, only 30 met the requirements necessary to be value engineered. Cross construction and city and county staff receives the final redesigned plans in October 2026, October 27, 2023, prepare a notice to bidders, and reopen the fire station building that were abandoned November 1st and right until the 20th of 2023. City and county staff met to review the sealed minutes on November 21, 2023, and filed up a tabulation sheet to create the guaranteed maximum price. The guaranteed maximum price for Station Three is listed below. Station is $11.6 million, general conditions and supervision is $1,900,000. Crossland's contingency is $311,000, owners which we asked $311,000. The bond is $91,000. Construction payday will be $527,000. Tabulate's up to $13.7 million. The city purchasing manager states that the project comes with a cost of more than $250,000, and the local bidder is not more than 1/2% greater than the low bidder. And the local bidder agrees to meet the low bid within 48 hours after receiving no notifications from the city. The governing body may award the bid to the local bidder if all required factors are met. During the bidding, one local contractor was within 1/2% of downtown contractors' bid. As specified in the purchasing meeting, the local contractor agreed to meet the required factors and accept the proposals. The city commission expressed an interest in having the local companies and contractors look on the project where possible. After reviewing the bids submitted, we are pleased to report that if approved, more than 50% of the work will be awarded to local contractors. During the bidding process, a rescue bay was listed as an alternative. This would have been an additional building used to house rescue equipment. Bidding receipt for this alternative was $300,824. The rescue bay is not included in GMP at this time, but staff will continue to monitor overall costs on Station Three and may bring forward recommendations related to alternative at the future meeting. Alternatives before you, the governing body may approve the guaranteed maximum price as presented and authorize staff to sign the construction contract. Alternative two, the governing body may approve the guaranteed maximum price with the additional, additions of rescue bay and authorize staff to sign the construction contract. Alternative three, the governing body may deny the guaranteed maximum price and deny staff up signing a construction contract. Alternative four, the governing body may approve, may provide alternative direction. Recommendation was now to be, staff approved the governing, staff recommends the governing body approve the guaranteed maximum price as presented and authorize at design construction contract. Physical note, this person will be found on the account 403771006616.
Now, I do appreciate, I mean, I know this, this actually feels kind of like now it's getting real. I know this has been since, it's been a dream of the city for many years, and now, 2017, the voter says yes to this, and then here it is, 2023, and then we're beginning to do something that's, you know, really close. So, I really appreciate you sticking with that, and I know there's lots of details. And also, the cost savings of $2.4 million, that didn't go unnoticed. Really appreciate that. And I know cost of wind up overall, but I can't remember what they actual, what they anticipated, but it seems like it was pretty close to.
Protective budget was around 10.9 or 11.6 over the past years.
Wow.
No good job.
Any comments? Questions?
Just a quick question on the, on the rescue bay, which is, or the additional building that we're looking at maybe down the road, possibly? I mean, where are we going to house that additional equipment if that's not built? That was just my, I mean, I looked at that.
Right now, we have it scattered. It's, I have some of the city shop down, but I think we have a lot, we have some of the airport.
Okay.
Could be nice to have it all in one place, but now we're kind of a little over budget right now where we projected, so we could authorize it and go ahead and build it now, or we can wait and see how the project develops over the next, say, 12 months and make a decision.
If the contingency dollars are not used, can those kick in to use that? So, okay, so the hope is maybe we won't have to use those, and then you'd already have the dollars.
That's, yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I move that we approve the guaranteed maximum price of $13,79460 and authorize staff to sign the construction contract.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I would like to add that the county commission reviewed this yesterday. The action they took was to recommend that the city commission approve the guaranteed maximum price and move forward with the, with the project. So we have kept in touch, and Chief's done a great job with staying in contact with EMS and them being involved throughout the design process. But we previewed this to them yesterday at their county commission meeting.
I still stand by my second, then.
Okay, very good. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Item G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the purchase of fixtures, furniture, and equipment for Station Three not to exceed $947,000.
Hello, good. Now that guaranteed maximum price has been determined, we are seeking approval to purchase fixtures for interior equipment for Station Three. Fire Department staff began developing a list on specific items definitely needed to outfit Station Three upon its completion. In an effort to be more, be as thorough as possible, the listing so that everything could kitchen seat, kitchen appliances, to extra kitchen equipment, lower the breakdown of the costs of items needed for Station Three are estimated to be between the seven line items and $947,000. At this, at this time, time clocks, phones, and phones are not figured in the overall total. When pricing for those items has been determined, an update for the costs will be provided to the governing body. Alternatives before you is approve the purchase of fixtures, furniture, and equipment for Station Three or deny purchases and provide further guidance. Staff recommends alternative three, oh, sorry, alternative one for Station. Apologize. The costs of these will be included in the Geo Bond in the 0.3 CEX on 403.
Make a motion that we approve the purchase of the fixtures, furniture, and equipment for Station Three not to exceed $947,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And is Commissioner Ortiz stepping down for this one as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Item 12H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the purchase of one Pierce Enforcer Pumper for $945,146.17, and one Pierce Enforcer Ariel for $1,983,767.17 from Conrad Fire Equipment. Chief?
As we approach groundbreaking, staff request permission to approve, to approve the purchase of two fire apparatus for Station Three. The purchase of fire apparatus for use of Station Three was identified in the Geo Bond. Apparates will be purchased through sourceable contracts. Source was a nationwide competitive, competitively solicited procurement program that solicited proposals on a wide array of products. Staff began meeting in 2022 to determine what type of apparatus are needed for the new station. After identifying the need for the pumper and the aerial, a tender and brush truck. Staff began working with Conrad Fire Equipment to design and spec the apparatus while Station Three has a proper ground ran. It's anticipated for construction begin January 2024. With the current turnaround time of 36 months for an engine and 48 months for an aerial, staff recommends moving forward with ordering those two apparatus, Conrad Fire Equipment. Has provided two options for the purchase of the apparatus as a relation to the pumper. The cost of the apparatus without any discounts is $1,960,000. If a payment is made in full, get the time of the order. A prepaid discount of $151,558.75 will be applied, leaving the total at $945,246.17. As a relation to the aerial, the cost of the apparatus without any discounts is $2.3 million. If payment is made in full, a prepaid order discount of $330,000 will be applied, leaving the cost at $1.93 million. Due to significant lead times you need, needed to purchase the pumper and the aerial, staff recommend moving forward on the first vehicle apparatus now. The lead time for the tender and tender truck and the skater brush truck isn't nearly as long, therefore, staff will continue to monitor the overall cost of Station Three and bring forward a recommendation at a future meeting as this project progresses. Alternatives before you is the governing body may approve the purchase of the Pierce Enforcer Engine and the Pierce Enforcer Ariel from Conrad Fire Equipment. Alternative two, the governing body may deny the purchase of the Pierce Enforcer Engine, one Pierce Enforcer Ariel from Conrad Equipment. Staff recommends alternative one. These purchases will also come out of the Geo Bond Fund, 40377100-6616. Have any questions?
I didn't realize the lead time was so great, and it's sad, you'd have a brand-new fire station and nothing to put in it, so it's kind of a, it is, that's, but the cost of this equipment is staggering, but it's understandable.
Mayor, I make a motion we approve the purchase of one Piercer Enforcer Pumper and one Piercer Enforcer Ariel from Conrad Fire Equipment.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
It's a lot of money.
Yes. Long time coming.
He wants a shirt. 12I, the governing body is asked to consider and approve three appointments to the Advisory Board, Airport Advisory Board. Rochelle?
Good afternoon. We currently have three members with terms expiring at the end of this year. Members are Carmen Delatorre, Mike Richmeyer, and Charlie Robinson. All three members have served their two terms, which is the limit per Resolution 2196. They have expressed interest to be reappointed to the Advisory Board due to the ongoing construction of the terminal. They started at the planning process and would like to see the project through, given the governing body's consideration of that. That would require waiver of Resolution 2196 to appoint them on to the Advisory Board for the next term, starting January 1st through, 2024 through December 31st of 2026. We do currently have seven applications on file, which their names are listed on the memo, as well as all their accompanying applications on file. Other Advisory Board members are Jett DeSalvo, Aaron Anderson, Tyler Dynis, and Larry Leffing that are currently serving on the Advisory Board. The governing body may consider to waive Resolution 2196 and appoint Carmen, Mike, and Charlie onto the Advisory Board, approve three of the applicants and/or guidance to staff. Staff and the Advisory Board recommend the waiver of Resolution 2196 to appoint Charlie, Carmen, and Mike.
Any questions?
Mayor, I make a motion we approve the waiver of Resolution 2196 and appoint, and the appointment of Carmen Delatorre, Mike Richmeyer, and Charlie Robinson to the Advisory Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
While you're here, could you just give us a quick update on how everything's progressing? Somebody asked me today, the other day, actually today, about how the airport was progressing on the phases.
Yeah, so Phase Two is going well. All this structural still is in place, all the wall walls are going up. The final slat should be poured tomorrow, and the hope is to get everything enclosed by Christmas time, and then the benches on the inside will start. The roof deck should start either later this week or early next week. And then the windows, they can stall in two to three weeks on Phase Two, start that process. But we are currently in negotiations for the restaurant bender. Hopefully, we can make a public announcement at the next meeting, if not at the meeting in January for that space. Otherwise, everything's going as planned.
So still on, on target to be completed on time?
Yes, yes, we're looking at late spring.
Sure.
I wonder, we had some people who were, had to be held over, and they couldn't because of weather issues, and so, but they said the way the American staff and the way your staff treats everybody is exceptional, and so it is really hard to, it's really hard to have to miss a flight or have a flight canceled, but when we do, it sounds like you guys are really doing a good job to really make as many accommodations as you can. So they really appreciate that, and they said that's pretty rare. You there is angry about something.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were very complimentary.
Yeah, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right.
Thanks, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Good job.
Final business items, the consent agenda. If there aren't any of those you wish to pull off and discuss separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda items J1 through 6.
I move to approve consent agenda items J1 through J6.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
We're ready for Commissioner reports.
All right, Commissioner Enroe.
So I just want to let everybody know I was here early for the pre-meeting. I know.
That we didn't have?
I got only one agenda. I'm always worried I'm going to miss that, and so I thought, was this somewhere else? And I was expecting to see Lynn to go, oh, yeah, you were supposed to be over here. So it wasn't that, so just to let you know, that makes up for any time I'm late. I was over an hour early, so, but, no, and I really do enjoy the pre-meetings. I think there's so much information given, and so I do not like missing those. I did want to, just, and I was going to check with Mike. I had our neighborhood, a couple of people in the neighborhood, ask me about the process for getting the street light in their neighborhood, and I honestly had no idea what that was alike, so if we can figure out what that is and then do who they need to speak to, they just feel like their neighborhood's really dark, and they've had a couple of vandalism's in their neighborhood, and so they were wanting to go ahead and make sure that if they can, they thought increased lighting would make a difference. They're all going to get the doorbells where you can see, but they did think increased lighting was important, so. Remember, there's lots of packages out there this time of the year, and so, you know, I mean, that's one thing that they said, that all of them have these doorbells that tell you when your package arrives, which, you know, I'm, I need to get with technology or something. We just have dogs that let us know that the UPS-
We just have dogs that let us know that the UPS man or anybody else will be in the room outside, so. There has been so much going on this during, already and December's nay been here and so incredible weekend of activities. I did several, but one of my favorites was, there was a tremendous, just turnout for the Rudolph Run. I could not believe it. I was shocked. I only did the one mile thing and so I did beat my nephew, that's all I can, only because I pushed him out of the way right before the finish. But I do want to say thank you just to the recommission staff, it was really well done. I mean, it, it was huge and people looked like they were having a lot of fun and just had a lot of those kind of things. And I know there's lots of opportunities again coming up and doing these different things. I would just say please be healthy, please be, you know, make sure you get hydrated. I mean, this is the time of the year, you can get really worn out, but I just really appreciate the beauty of our city. We've been driving around last couple nights, looking at lights and it's been really neat and I really appreciate the lights that the city puts up. It is a tremendous amount of work. I can't even imagine how much time and effort it goes, but just to let you know, it's appreciated and it's not going unnoticed, so that's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Cessna.
I just want to congratulate all the staff on their years of service in the, their various departments throughout the city. It's great to see that we have dedicated employees, you know, ten, twenty and even thirty years that have stayed in, you know, on, on the job, so congratulations to them and hopefully stay for another ten or twenty or thirty years. Attended the, the Christmas lighting event, which was really a nice event. The downtown area is really beautiful this time of the year with all the, the lights and so really well attended as well as the, the Christmas parade and that was really well attended, so. A lot of concerts going on this time of the year at the schools and other events, so just be mindful of going out and celebrating and enjoying all those great events during this festive season and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, I just kind of echo what the other two commissioners have mentioned. Congratulations on the milestones and all of that, that's great to see. Also, just kind of like to stress the shop local, shop local type, you know, we, we want our, you know, we want people to come to the community, but we want our dollars to stay here as well, but you can also, if you don't find it here, you can shop to our neighbors, liberal Scott City, Dodge City, so those, those communities help our community out as well, so. Did attend the tree lighting ceremony and that was, did an awesome job in switching the light on and, you know, sponsored by Commerce Bank and so they, you know, they flipped them on, had a little bit of a delay on the second part, but, I mean, I think it was good because you got two cheers out of it.
Yeah.
And all the lights come on the second time, it's like, yeah! So, it was, it was good, it was a great time, so good to see all the people out and it was a wonderful night, evening to be out there, to attend. The parade as well, you know, the videos that were posted on, online, just, you know, they're, they're amazing, but it was, it was nice to be there, to just be there in person and see all the floats go by. I noticed a lot of the departments for the city that was there, they decorated, you know, either a truck or, you know, some sort of vehicle that they have for the city, it was, it was awesome to see, so. Also, I think that's it. All my, yeah, that's all my check, well, I didn't want to do, I don't want to repeat everything else that you said, so, thank you.
Commissioner Dick.
All right, well, so in the spirit of repeating what everybody else has said, congratulations to everybody who has the work anniversary, I mean, that is a long time to work at a place, I mean, ten years is a lot, twenty years is a lot and, and thanks for Rose for thirty years. I don't know if I've been getting thirty out of her, but maybe.
She should have, she should have.
So, thank you for that and it goes to show the dedication and the, what we have here as a city, so great to see, great to celebrate them. Good to see more childcare options happening in Garden City, I know it's been one of the focuses that we've had over the last couple of years. It's good to see a new center opening without another center closing at the same time. So, I know if you know anybody who has childcare needs or anybody who's looking to move to the area for childcare needs, I know Garden, so like Jeanette said, Garden Academy is there, Little Leaders has openings, I believe. And then, and then also remember Dreams as well as all the home daycare providers, so we actually are at a point where we can take kids and which is a great position to be, much better than, than nobody having childcare options at all. So, that was good to see. Also, great to see the revitalization of the Downtown Development Fund. I know last time that that happened, we got a lot of progress and really stepped up what the downtown was offering, so I'll be excited to see how that comes out again this year and to see how that goes. Like everybody else said, had a great tree lighting event, also went to the letters of Santa, so I wrote my list of Santa, so we'll see how, how well it works, but it was good, so thanks for downtown putting that together, along with the, the city for putting the tree lighting together. And then also, like everybody said, the Christmas parade was very well attended, very well put on, I mean, great floats, the city did a great job, every, all the departments had great floats as well, all the police and all the staff that it takes to do a parade, especially when we're talking about a night parade where it's a little bit more, you have to be, I think, a little bit more technical to make sure everything is right because you just can't see everything when, when all the lights are down like that, so. Great time, great time to be in Garden City and like Commissioner Ortiz says, remember to shop local. Those dollars that you spend local continue to make us be able to continue to grow, so thank you.
All right, thanks. Yeah, the tree lighting was a lot of fun and thanks to Kent and staff and all of the electric department employees who put all of that together, I mean, just the thousands and thousands of lights is impressive and then there were some additional lights added this year as well, so it was really kind of fun to be able to drive down Eighth Street and Main Street and see as long as, as well as the side streets and stuff too, so it was a lot of fun to be able to do that and.
It was all planned, you know, the.
It was, it was.
The cheers, you know, if we could have stretched that into three, we probably would have, no. It was, it was a lot of fun and it's a lot of work, but what I enjoyed about it is just seeing all of the people that were at Stevens Park for this event and the local church that provided hot chocolate, I thought that was great. I mean, the, the show choir from the high school performing and just having Santa there and, and all the work that Downtown Vision did for that event, it really has grown into this huge community event that people really look forward to and to see the families, I mean, it's, it's just endearing and it's a lot of fun to be able to do that. The parade was also fun, Commissioner Dick and I were in the parade and to be in front of all of the big city trucks behind us and my little car as we're driving and I look in the rearview mirror and there's the garbage truck and the electrical truck with all of their big lights and at one point I said, we should have had them decorate this car because our little lights, you know, but it was a lot of fun and it was very well attended and yes, I think this was probably one of the better attended parades throughout the year, I mean, it was, I'll be curious to see what those numbers are, but it's just amazing. I also wanted to say thank you to DFA, they reached out to United Way and to the city to invite city staff and United Way staff on a tour and they wanted to talk about the partnership between DFA and the city and how that could work and it was a, it was an amazing tour, I mean, it really was a good tour and to be able to look at the business and have them kind of discuss partnerships and discuss opportunities, I thought was just very open and welcoming on their behalf, so thanks to DFA for that, one of our business partners in the community. And, yeah, I think for the employees, just the fact, you know, it's impressive to see ten and twenty and thirty year employees, but just the sheer number of employees who are celebrating ten years and twenty years and, and Rose with thirty years, I mean, it's just, it's, it's phenomenal, I mean, we really are a great place to work in the city and congratulations to the chief and everyone else for the fire station because again, a huge, as Commissioner Enroe said, you know, this is a project from the twenty seventeen tax, sales tax initiative and to see that coming to fruition is impressive, so. With that being said, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
And don't leave because we have to sign something.